Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for February 13th, 2018. Prior to beginning the proceedings, I'd like to invite up our good friend Pastor Darren Longmire from Teen Challenge and Forest Park. And then after we're done giving some praise, we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance. So if you'd come on up to the podium, Pastor.
Let us bow our heads. Father God, we are so grateful for just another privilege to meet and discuss matters of this great city. We ask, Father God, that you would be in the midst of this meeting, that you would show yourself strong with our council members, Lord, and we just thank you for their desire and their willingness just to want to see Muskegon do and be in the right direction, Father. We pray, Lord, that you would bless the efforts of this council. We pray, Father God, that you would continue to bless our mayor and just continue to strengthen him, Lord, and we just ask that you would just help us, Lord, to just make this city great through you, because that's the only way it's going to become great, through you. And so I pray, Father God, that you lead this meeting with the power of your Holy Spirit and that you would continue to lead us as we leave and go to our separate destinations after the meeting. We give you praise, honor, and glory. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all.
Thanks again, Pastor, and thank you for your good work at Teen Challenge. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the January 23rd, 2018 regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Waiving of fees, City Clerk, summary request. Staff is requesting to waive all fees associated with a free community event at Heritage Landing on May 26th in celebration of an anniversary for a prominent company in Muskegon. The event will last from 5:00 PM until dusk. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval. Fireworks, City Clerk, summary request. Staff has received a request to display fireworks at Heritage Landing on Saturday, May 26th at dusk. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval based on approval of the returns and inspection of fireworks by the fire motel. Purchase of HUD home at 1015 East Forest Avenue, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to approve the purchase of a HUD home located at 1015 East Forest Avenue in Oakview Neighborhood for the price of $34,000. After the sale, CNF will rehabilitate the single-family dwelling as part of the home-funded homebuyer program. Staff recommendation to approve the request to purchase the property. Special event request, Great Lakes Surf Festival at Pier Marquette Park planning. Summary request, a special event application has been submitted for the Great Lakes Surf Festival to be held at Pier Marquette Park on August 17th and 18th, 2018. It will be a family-friendly event celebrating water sports such as paddle boarding, kayaking, and windsurfing kiteboarding. City staff has met with the applicant, Joe Bydowood, twice, and we have given preliminary approval for the event so that he can obtain sponsors and advertise. He's requesting to add overnight park camping with the event, which requires City Commission approval. The camping areas would be similar to what Burning Foot had last year. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval. Skate park fund amendment, City Manager, summary request. In 2016, the Commission created a community project fund with a community foundation in an attempt to raise funds to build a skate park. The fund has generated very few donations aside from the city's initial $10,000 investment as active fundraising has not gotten underway yet due to a desire to have the intended location and design elements determined first. This is city's intent to still pursue a new skate park. Staff is recommending that the fund be transitioned from a community project to an organization endowment focused on all Muskegon parks. Once the endowment is created, the fund will be known as the City of Muskegon Parks Fund and the community foundation will transfer the existing balance of the Muskegon Parks Fund. The City of Muskegon Parks Fund will have an initially endowed balance of approximately $22,000. Staff recommendation to approve the amendment and authorize the mayor to sign. Windward Point Master Plan, City Manager, summary request. In 2017, the Commission agreed to provide $75,000 towards the master planning of the Windward Point project. Since that time, a donor has offered to gift the City of Muskegon an additional $25,000 towards that master planning effort. The city has received the donation and staff is requesting permission to pass the $25,000 through to Pier Muskegon. Staff recommendation to accept the gift and commit an additional $25,000 to the Windward Point Master Plan. Community Relations Committee Appointment, City Clerk, summary request. To accept the recommendation of the Community Relations Committee to appoint Josie Jones to the Citizens Police Review Board. Staff recommendation to accept the recommendation.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion?
Yeah, Item G is in German.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Item E.
Item F.
Item F?
And if there are no others, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented minus Items E, F, and G.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Warren, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus Item E, F, and G. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, I would move that we approve the special event request for Great Lakes Surf Festival at Pier Marquette Park.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the Great Lakes Surf Festival at Pier Marquette Park. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, this is a first-time event, I believe.
Correct.
And second?
No, correct.
First time. I'd like to hear a little bit about, we're going to have two nights of camping. Anticipated expense for the city, or is it being covered by the event? And I read that we get a percentage of the camping fees. If you could further tell us about that.
Yeah, sure. So it's really one night of public camping. The first night where they'll have camping, it'll be for, they'll have vendors and volunteers and people here setting up and working the event. They plan on allowing those folks to camp the first night. Second night would be the camping that they plan to sell to attendees or other folks. All the costs that the city incurs are reimbursed, just like they are for any other festival. So anything that's a city-related cost is reimbursable from the festival itself. And then from the profit standpoint, or from the profit-sharing standpoint, we'll take 10% of the gross proceeds of the camping, much like we do with Burning Foot, which is the very next week. And I should make it clear, we picked this week on purpose so that we would set up one weekend and then essentially tear down the following weekend. So there would be less impact on the beach, because both, they have a very similar footprint and so they would be able to set up for this event. Then we have a couple of days where there's kind of nothing going on there, and then Burning Foot would start up the very next weekend. But there would be less impact on the beach. They'll follow the same footprint.
Are the two events consecutive weekends, then?
Yes.
But the Burning, that didn't shut down the park at all, is still open to the public?
Correct, just the footprint of their actual event. This one will be a little different because it'll be free. There won't be like a gate charge to get in there, but they do intend to have a similar sort of setup with vendors in a circle, kind of like you see with Burning Foot. Only a set of beer vendors. They'll have things like surfboard vendors or paddleboard vendors or, you know, those sorts of things that are appealing to that industry, to those recreational users. The goal is to get folks to the water, learning how to paddleboard, or learning how to kite surf, or learning how to surf. And they have a number of things planned for that. If it's not a good day for, you know, for surfing, if it's a flat day, you know, they have some other things that they'll do to keep people busy, to entertain people and, you know, and keep them engaged.
And hopefully, our new manufacturer in town will be a big part of this?
Very well could be. Their goal was to start engaging sponsors and partners right away as soon as they knew exactly what the event was going to look like. And this is a big step, you know, that'll, from a sponsor's standpoint, it'll, you know, that'll, that will probably command and maybe a little more sponsorship level if people are going to be there for two days or camping and, you know, staying there for a prolonged period of time. I will say that the camping was, has been very, very well-received over the last two years from the folks that have been camping on, you know, on the beach. We hear from a lot of, actually, a lot of the campers were local folks that just have always wanted to camp on their beach and just never really could. And so when we walked through there, and I helped out, we do a lot of stuff at Burning Foot, when we walked through there and talked to a lot of people, yeah, there were a lot of out-of-towners camping, but there were a whole lot of people that lived right in, even beachward block to neighborhood that were camping out there, enjoying their, you know, their one time a year that they could actually camp out on the beach, and they were very happy to do it. And my guess is we'll see a lot of people, same thing with this one, maybe even more of a family environment, where we can actually maybe get some, you know, some full families out there camping on the beach. I know they do intend to limit the number of people per tent, you know, they're kind of working out those details there, but I don't think they intend to have five or six or seven adults in a tent. They're trying to keep it very family-friendly where it's not as much of a party atmosphere.
When my hair was down past my shoulders, we used to camp out there until we would get kicked out by people that looked like that gentleman back there. It's lovely. Commissioner?
Are they getting a liquor license at all, or is there no plan?
I think that's to be determined. They haven't said that they want one yet. They would prefer not to because of all the extra fencing and requirements that come along with it, which was one of the big reasons why they wanted to partner with Burning Foot, because setting up one time for two events really cut down on the cost, allowed them to not have to look for other revenue streams. But I will say, still, that's kind of to be determined. They haven't indicated that they want to do it yet. They're trying to avoid it. They would prefer to partner with, like, the Deck or something along those lines and have maybe something happen down there for the people that want to do that and focus more on the families.
Commissioner?
Is anybody here on behalf of the event?
I did not see them.
No? Is this associated with any organization or group or business or?
The gentleman who's listed in here, Joe, he was a, he lives in Grand Haven. I want to say he was a professional surfer or a professional kiteboarder, and he's, and he wanted to kind of bring all of his sponsors or his, you know, his, bring his industry into the Great Lakes, essentially. But he's apparently very well-known in the industry. I'm not involved in the industry. I don't really do a lot of board sports, but he's been professional from, you know, from a kiteboarding and surfing and all these board sports. He's been a sponsored professional, you know, for a number of years.
Okay.
And if you're recognized, maybe you don't recognize the name, but he was a gentleman. If you remember in Grand Haven, there was somebody that was drowning off the pier and a surfer kind of came in and saved the individual. He was a surfer that came in. If you read, if you look up newspaper article, it's the same, it's the same individual that, you know, that was involved in that particular event. But he's a surfer. He typically surfs in Grand Haven, but he loves coming up to Pier Marquette and surfing. He recognizes that the kind of event he wants to have just isn't necessarily conducive to the amount of beach they have.
Okay.
So there's a reason why he likes Pier Marquette, the open space.
Why he wants to come to Pier Marquette. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. For the safety, are we providing any type of service with our public safety or lifeguards or anything like that to this event?
We haven't discussed lifeguards. I'm sure that there will be a safety plan, just like there is for Burning Foot and all of our events. The Public Safety Department will kind of review the event once we have all the, everything nailed down, and they'll recommend X number of police or fire or EMS, you know, on-site. And my guess is the water conditions will probably play a key role in what we ultimately decide, you know, as the event gets a little bit closer. If it's a very rough day out there, it might, you know, change the, you know, change the requirements or change the amount of personnel that we have on. Also, if it ends up having 100 people at it versus 10,000 people at it, I think that those sorts of things, we'll just have to learn with it being the very first one.
What about the projected attendance? Do you have any idea of forecast?
No. No.
Anywhere between 100 and 10,000.
Yeah, they're hoping for a few thousand people, though. They are hoping for a few thousand people. I think Burning Foot brought in, you know, something like 4,000-ish or 3,000-ish into that area, and they fit in there, you know, they fit in there just fine.
Right.
So I think they're looking to try to match that sort of, that sort of number. And as, they'll know more, they talk about as they kind of start registering participants and getting vendors and sponsors and stuff in, though, they said that'll kind of be an indicator on how wide the reach is and how far people are coming from and help them understand how many people are likely to come, and that'll kind of start guiding some of the things that we ask them to do, like providing shuttles from other parking spaces and things like that, which we learned at Burning Foot, you know, was kind of, ended up being a good thing. We had people parking downtown and riding shuttles into, you know, down to the beach so we'd have less cars, and we were finding different places to park people so we can get them back and forth easier. And we'll know if we need to do that as it gets closer to the event.
Okay. And there's any type of limitation of how many people can attend that?
No, we could probably fit. We could, I don't want to say there's an infinite number of people we could fit on that beach, but there's a lot of space down there. You know, there's quite a bit of space.
I just thought maybe it was a part to just section off just for...
Yeah, there will be a part that's sectioned off for them, but it'll still be, like I said, even that area that they had for Burning Foot, there was still plenty of room in there for more people if they, if they wanted to put more people in there.
That's good.
Anything else on this item? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I'm excited by this event. I think it's a great addition. It helps promote utilization enjoyment of our waterfront, which aligns well with our whole Imagine Muskegon Lake and all these other initiatives going on in our community and with KNO Outdoors. Hopefully, there'll be a tie-up with them in the future. And I'm happy to hear that all our costs are going to be reimbursed, so be fully reimbursed in that regard. Especially pleasing that access to the festival is going to be free. Camping, there'll be a charge and rentals and whatnot. So, and it sounds like 10% of gross receipts from the camping charges, that's the same that was the price for Burning Foot as well.
Correct.
So is that basically a de facto policy, you know, going forward in terms of if an event wants to have charge for camping on our beach, that we would expect 10% of gross receipts?
Yeah, I would say for now, we would probably use it as, I wouldn't want to call it like a policy. It was a number that we settled on with Burning Foot when we looked at what their expenses were, and they were using it as a way to offset expenses, obviously. And it was, we agreed to it as kind of a fair amount between us and Burning Foot, and the thought was, let's make sure that we at least, if we're doing it for one, let's do the same for the others. That doesn't mean at some point in the future, we say, okay, this is very popular, for example, and maybe, maybe there should be a bigger kickback or a different kickback at a later date, but I would say at least tentatively for this year, we'll treat the two events the same at 10%. If it becomes too lucrative and we're taking too small amount, we'll probably have a different group wanting to host camping fundraisers there every single weekend. And I don't know that we want to do that. I think we like the idea of having it be kind of special a few times a year, which will help keep it so that when we do have it, it's full and it's fun, and then it goes away and doesn't drag on for the whole summer.
Right. Now gets to my next question, actually. You know, what is our policy on which events and when can do camping? Because this is only the second event that has charged camping. I mean, we had one event that's been for many, many years that had used some camping, but it was just for the volunteers and organizers. But Burning Foot was the first event to do paid camping on a public beach, and now we're doing it for this event. And, you know, maybe down the road, we will start seeing requests every single weekend. So I don't know if staff has already considered a policy or if there's something that you should consider going forward. Maybe it's limited to only August or, you know, one week in a month or something. I don't know, something for you guys to deliberate on, but I think it'd be helpful for event organizers going forward as it does become more popular, that they know what the policy is in terms of what the fees would be and when would be available. There's certainly a rationale, I think, for only August, because you're, if you're able to benefit from back-to-back weekends like we are in this situation, maybe it does make sense to any weekend in August, this is permissible, but only in August.
Yeah. So we kind of batted that question around quite a bit at the staff level, you know, over the last year, trying to, especially when the discussion came up, you know, we have this beach and people use it, and then they raise money for their causes, but don't necessarily raise money for the upkeep of the beach, you know, for additional upkeep of the beach. And we kind of pressed that issue out there with a number of those end-users, and really what we found was, aside from one event that was used in Harbor, in Harbertown Park, you know, the little beach over there, was generating quite a bit of money. The other ones just weren't necessarily generating enough consistently where we could say, okay, to use camping, it's $5,000. Because what we were finding were some of the events were doing really well, and some of them were just, and they weren't trying to make money. They were just, you know, they were just doing enough to put on their event and do whatever celebration that they were doing. So it was really hard to say, to fit a flat number. That's why we settled on the percentage to say, okay, it could be as much or as little as you want. If you want to charge more for camping, then we get more. If you charge less for camping, then, you know, we get less, but you get less at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
And then in terms of what, you know, what months we limited to or what weekends, you know, I guess we didn't really talk a whole lot about that, except that we didn't want it to be every weekend sort of thing. There are other events that, you know, that have approached us and haven't quite pulled the trigger on their ask. You know, we had some folks that, some folks that do some of the Rebel Road types of stuff. They said, okay, we're, you know, we're finding that the hotels are too expensive, you know, at this time of year to get the people here that we want. We think that maybe there's a chance some of them might want to camp down there and extend, you know, extend the, you know, we didn't quite get to the part where they asked, but they're hinting around about it. So my guess is we might see, you know, if they see it as popular and they see it as the easy way to either break even or, you know, or fundraise, we'll probably see more. We'll have to develop a little bit more of a policy. But as of now, we haven't had any, besides these, this individual didn't ask us to camp. That was kind of our push to them, which was, Jesus, seems like you're going to have a lot of families out there, and he wanted to push them into the hotels. And he said, well, this is like one of the busiest times of the year. You're going to have trouble filling up hotel rooms because, one, they're already going to be full, and, two, they're going to be quite a bit more expensive than, you know, than what your families are going to be expecting. And they were worried that that would detract from attracting people out of town. And we said, well, you know, this is what we did at Burning Foot, and it seemed to work really well to get people in town more affordably. And so that's when they decided to kind of fare that out a little bit, a little bit further. But we haven't gotten a whole lot of, a whole lot of people wanting that as part of their event, but we only have the two main events down there right now.
Right now.
From our standpoint, it's like, it's, I don't want to say it's a cheap, easy way, but it's a low-cost way for us to get people to the beach and realize the value of it and probably a lot of people that otherwise aren't coming here and maybe start making that their vacation go-to so that when we're ready to see more things happen down there, whether they're pop-up shops or, you know, or whatever that future ends up looking like down there at the beach, they already see it as a destination. So I would, I would say let's be careful before we jump on and say, hey, let's sure have been limited, mostly because we've done it twice, and neither time, I don't think we received any complaints from neighbors. And actually, I think we found that a lot of the neighbors went over there and camped too. So it might be a win-win, even if it's three weekends or four weekends or whatever the number ends up, you know, kind of ends up being if they're spread out throughout the year.
Yeah. I just think that it's important that we have, and it doesn't sound otherwise, but that we have a policy that's fair and applied uniformly, so that there's equitable access to utilize the beach, our public beach, in that regard. And, you know, maybe there is flexibility or reason or rationale for saying, a first-time event, you're just getting off the ground, it's a lower rate for you. But second year going after that, this is what the rate is. If we want to have some built-in flexibility in that policy, but...
Yeah, we'll work on putting something, maybe to start being more applicable in 2000, like maybe 19, or if we get more events in 2018, make a harder look at them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, Windward Point Master Plan, Commissioner German.
Yeah. Okay, I move to accept the gift and commit an additional $25,000 to Windward Point Master Plan.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to accept the gift and commit an additional $25,000 for the Windward Point Master Plan. Commissioner German?
Okay. The $25,000 gift, that person just wanted to remain anonymous, is that...
No, they didn't necessarily want to remain anonymous. I can tell you who, you know, where the dollars came from. I just didn't know how to say it in there because it was a pass-through to us. Consumers Energy made a donation to the community foundation. Community Foundation made a donation to us, you remember that?
Yeah, that's right.
And so I didn't necessarily, I wasn't sure if I, if the donation came from the community foundation or from Consumers Energy. The beginning point was Consumers Energy.
Right.
The grantor to us was a community foundation.
Okay, I was just kind of curious about that. Also, now, we are providing $75,000. Now, is that going to offset the 70, portion of that addition?
It'll be an addition to...
Okay, all right. And that $25,000, what is it going to help them do? The master plan itself is what, $75,000?
Well, the master plan was, I think, significantly more than that.
Okay, okay.
When the, when the group, you know, initially came through and made their asks, they made some asks of the community foundation. I think this is kind of the follow-through of that. Community Foundation found a donor to kind of help offset the cost to that, and it just took a little longer than us. We were one of the first ones to kind of jump on board, and the other donations, I think, or the other contributions have been kind of working their way in.
Okay.
And I'm not saying other ones will come through us, but this was one that, you know, it kind of almost had to come through us, the community, it had to run through a couple of, you know, a couple of nonprofits, essentially. Consumers had to give it to the, to the community foundation, but the community foundation couldn't grant it to, directly to Windward Point, part of Pier Muskegon, they had it granted to an agency like the City of Muskegon. And then we had the ability to actually pay it out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this item? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And my sincere apologies, Commissioner Johnson, seeing as I don't know my alphabet. Item F.
I move to approve the amendment to the City of Muskegon Parks Fund and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the amendment and authorize the mayor to sign. Commissioner German, or Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for moving the $10,000 from the organizational fund to the endowment fund, we still preserve So for moving the $10,000 from the organizational fund to the endowment fund, we still preserve the option to use that $10,000 for a skate park down the road. When we are ready, because we're not actively in a, we don't have an active fundraising campaign right now, but when we're ready to actively fundraise for that, would the donations be made to the endowment fund or would we need to pull that money back out and establish another, re-establish the organizational fund?
Exactly. So, so the only amount of money that we would control in, like in large chunk like that would be our original $10,000. Anything that's, that was given to this fund or is given in the future becomes part of the endowment where we just spend kind of the interest earnings off of it. So if we get to the point where we're ready to go to, to true fundraising for the skate park, we would recreate that skate park builder fund or community fund. And then we would gift out of this fund, the $10,000 to that fund and they would start the fundraising at that point. That would be the kickoff to the fundraising.
Okay.
But this gives us the flexibility to do that tomorrow or do that 10 years from now, whenever we're ready, whenever we're, we're ready to do it. And in the meantime, the, the fees associated with this type of fund are less. So we, it doesn't cost as much money to have it there, but also it's in their pooled funds. So it has the opportunity to earn a little bit of money where it was sitting as a builder fund or as a community fund, 3D project fund. It wasn't, you know, we missed out on essentially a year of potential growth. And so this would let us kind of get back involved, get back in the interest earning category.
And so there's no opportunity to earmark donations to this endowment fund? Because one of the things that, and part of the reason why I initially got excited about this, this fund is having a dedicated City of Muskegon Parks Fund is for several years now, I've been advocating for us to have a dedicated fund for our parks so as to allow our residents or visitors to donate to this fund. We hear this from people that particularly use our dog beach, that they want to have a, a way to donate in support of this. And so we talked about establishing a fund and then providing information at our parks, saying, you know, you can mail it in, you can, you know, do a QR code on your phone, pull it up and be able to make a donation from PayPal, your checking card, whatever, provide more opportunities for people to make those kind of donations and even potentially tying in capital campaigns each year. You know, this year we're raising for this or this year we're raising for that, or allow flexibility for them to earmark, I want my money to go to the dog park or I want my money to go to Pier Marquette or I want it to go to McGrath Park, that kind of thing. So it doesn't sound like this endowment fund would then be able to allow us to do that.
It wouldn't be able to allow, it wouldn't allow us to earmark sections of it to go to particular parks. To do that, we would need endowment funds for those individual parks like we have. I think Seifert Park has something, Mark or Drake Elliott has something, Pier Marquette Park has something.
McGrath.
McGrath, McGrath has something. So we have those in place in other, in other, in other parks. This one was really designed to just kind of be almost like a catch-all because we have, we have specific funds for all those parks, but we don't have one that we can use on, on the random, you know, need at, you know, at NIMs Park or you name, or you name a park. But if people wanted to give to a, you know, to something like that, we would have another, we would probably have another builder fund. And then we would start that kind of process all, you know, we'd start that process all over again. Or we would have to do like we did with the skate park and somebody would have to, whether it's the city or a private person, would have to put that initial, those initial dollars in there, that initial $10,000 in there to kind of, to start the, you know, to hit the initial endowed level so that it can start gifting. And that's what we had here, this Muskegon, the Muskegon Parks Fund was one that somebody set up and I'm not exactly sure who set it up and when it was set up, but only had about $12,000 and it didn't have a lot, enough money to make a big impact on any of the parks. And that was their thought was let's commingle these two together in the meantime, generate some interest and actually maybe have some significant, you know, some, some more significant dollars to invest in, you know, in, in the parks in general. And that could be the, the dog park. And people, dog park lovers could give to this, but they just couldn't necessarily guarantee that it would be for, you know, for, for the dog park. But at the same time too, if they're doing a endowment fund, all their gifts would only be able to, they would still only be able to give the endowed portion each year. So it's not, it's not like we could put the, you know, all the donations would add up and then we would buy something specific for the dog park. We would have to spend that down for maintenance or smaller capital items.
And who's going to be, you're going to be responsible for bringing those asks to the commission in terms of, who's going to oversee dispensing of this endowment fund each year of the, of the growth?
I'll, I'll look and see who they have listed, but in the other funds, it's, unless it's, unless it hasn't been listed by the original donor or the original grantor, it's been like the finance director and the city manager and somebody from the community foundation were the ones that would get together. So for example, like that, we do the Julie Hackley Fund, there's a, a group that comes together. So it doesn't, and that started off with the city and at some point it went to the community foundation. And there's a group of, you know, of selected individuals that are listed in there that come together and look at the grant applications and decide what to give. It probably makes a lot of sense, at least at the, initially that it is city staff because for the most part, the improvements are going to be things that we've talked about wanting to do to the parks. So probably what will happen is, is as we go through the budget development, you will say, we'll settle on, hey, we want a new drinking fountain at, you know, at, at this particular park. And then we'll say, okay, why don't we take the money out of this fund instead of out of the general fund? And then presumably we'll have consensus here and then as that fiscal year moves on, we'll go through the process, we'll make the request to the community foundation for the money and then we'll, you know, we would handle it all internally from a, from a staff standpoint. Maybe I would say we treat it differently if it was a, if it was a really large fund, like the Julie Hackley Fund has, has pretty big gifts every year. But as long as it's a small one like this, we're probably talking, you know, hundreds of dollars a year versus, yeah, versus expenses. And we might just decide to kind of let it ride for a little while as we're handling our needs otherwise and save it for when we have something really special that we want to do that we can't quite justify spending the dollars on.
My final question then, which isn't necessarily germane to this particular amendment, but it is about establishing that fund and a mechanism for people to donate, is that Mohammed, our former DPW director, last year indicated that such a system would be in place by this coming summer. And so, you know, we have had a changeover in directors, so is that anywhere, not to put Leanne on the spot, our, our new DPW director, but if that's anywhere on her to-do list or if that's something that city staff is still going to be looking at, how do we accomplish? Because, you know, I've been having either that and I've been hearing from the community that they'd like that, particularly insofar as, as our dog beach and Pier Marquette are concerned. And when, and our ongoing conversations over the years of, it costs hundreds of thousands to maintain our beaches and we're crunched for dollars. So having another opportunity, another way to raise revenues to help support those capital improvements would be beneficial.
We might consider doing the same thing that we're talking about right here then is, you know, is, is determine, do we have the funds to kind of be the initial endowment? And the next thing about making that initial endowment ourselves, it gives us, we always retain control of the initial investment. We could always spend that on more of a capital expense at the dog beach. So for example, the commission were to say, hey, let's have the city manager, you know, make, make preparations to set this up, authorize the expenditure of $10,000. So we could do the same thing we did with, with the skate park community fund, we'll go straight to a endowment fund and set an endowment up and then begin to, begin to gift off of it or at least have this, have the space for people to make their donations too. And I think that's really what their concern was, they didn't have, they didn't have a way to, to raise money and they didn't have a big donor up front to set up the fund and we were kind of at a little bit of a stand, standstill. I think if we step back and look at it the same way we did the, the skate park fund and just say, you know what, let's just bite the bullet and, and create the fund, knowing that the, at the end of the day, the, the benefactor is the, you know, is the city because it's our, it's going to support our park. It's essentially us spending $10,000 to create the fund so people can donate to it easier. And I think that the sentiment was people were more likely to donate to that park, to the community foundation than to send a check to the city to donate because it would be where that would just be commingled in with everything else and would it ever really get to the intended purpose or make, make a difference on the, you know, on the maintenance of the park?
Yeah.
You know, and I understand that sentiment, you know, completely. But if the commission wanted, that's something that maybe we can do some, some talk with, you know, have some discussion with the community foundation if they're agreeable, which I'm assuming they would be, we can come back at the next meeting and, you know, with the paperwork and, you know, and start that fund. And that would be a nice thing leading into the summer so people can start donating to it as soon as we get that sucker opened back up and, you know, start seeing the influx of people there. And maybe that involves us maybe doing some, putting some signage out there, telling people how to give to the community foundation.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Sure. Any other comments or questions on this item? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesvassiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any new business commissioners? Commissioner Warren?
I don't H.
Which one?
Oh, well, that was done under consent. Never mind. Now I'm getting confused.
No, that's okay.
H was already done under consent.
I don't know my alphabet. That's my fault. Commissioner Warren?
Um, I am wondering, it was brought up a little bit with Burning Foot and with camping and with all of that, the beach rentals conversation, will something be coming up in front of us shortly regarding the upcoming season?
Yeah, we just circled back on that and we, we expected to get to it before now. We will have something before you, in front of you before the, before the beach rental season comes, yes.
Okay.
We're a little behind schedule. We wanted to do it like around the holiday time, but actually Jeff and I just talked about it last week and, and we'll plan on having something.
And what is considered the beach rental season?
Summertime.
So we should see something in the next couple of months?
Labor Day, yeah.
Probably like the final draft was at the attorney's office. We had a meeting late fall and there were several different points we'd like to see in there. We gave it all to our city attorney and they're now drafting.
I don't know. Yeah. We have the final draft. And if you remember, we kind of changed originally, the staff was talking about a larger fee to offset costs associated with people, you know, kind of overburdening, for lack of better terms, the, the park. But we've kind of changed that and said, let's make it more of a nominal fee, but really focus on the quality of life issues that these, that, you know, that, I shouldn't say these, that some of the, some of the beach rentals, you know, caused, quality of problems they caused in the neighborhood and focus more on, on, on things like occupancy loads and, you know, inspections and less on, on revenue generation, at least initially, so we can kind of bring them into, you know, bring them into, you know, compliance, something that they're not, you know, that, that's in the out of compliance, now bring them into neighborhood norm, I guess, for lack of better terms.
Right.
Which is probably the most important thing for the neighbors.
I think, I think that's what it was. If you remember, we had a number of people here from the, from that neighborhood and we had a number, we had a number of, of vacation home folks here too.
Right.
They were more worried about the, about us charging them too much and the other folks were really worried about quality of life. So we kind of pushed those together and said, you know what, why don't we not go after their dollars, but help solve the quality of life issues that the neighbors have, you know, brought to our attention.
Right.
And they haven't forgotten. There's one, that one gentleman over on the channel, you know, he's called and emailed a number of times just to make sure that we didn't forget about it and I assure, keep assuring him that we haven't.
I just saw him in the store a few weeks ago and that's why I had exactly this thing on, what you said. So it's been said and I, but.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, just if we're going to do that, it'd be good if we had it in place like before May the first because that'd be, otherwise it just gets to be a train wreck.
Yes. I'll move it up closer to the top, top of the list. How's that sound?
Well, I, yeah, just, I'd rather do it early or not do it. It's best to do it when there's plenty of lead time between the seasons. Otherwise people get confused and mad.
Yep.
Absolutely. Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I had heard recently that for Lot 7 development over on Western Avenue, the general contractors Kent Companies, and I'd heard recently that everyone that's working on that project are not Muskegon residents, that most of the folks are coming from Grand Rapids, which was a little disconcerting to learn. And if that's the case, and I would like, if the commission agrees, would like for our city manager to kind of investigate that and find out if that's the case. And we are guaranteeing half of the units and we have $500,000 investment in this project. I think it's fair to expect that our locals are being employed, at least have a fair shot at being employed. So I would like to know if that's true, we're not, we don't have locals being hired. And if that is true, why not have they exhausted their options to hire locals, get some more context as to what's going on there? When, when it comes to projects that we have a vested interest in, I, I think it's reasonable to expect that locals are, are being hired so that we are keeping as much of the money as possible in our community. We're not necessarily going to, I'm not necessarily advocating for quotas because we don't have quotas right now for our IFTs, but we do kind of have that expectation at the same time, you're getting tax abatements, we track your demographics, we expect you to be hiring locals and have your workforce be reflective of our community.
Is, the general's local though, right? Is, I think it's Buck Construction, Andy's owner?
Correct. The, and they pass that on to Kent Companies, which is, is handling the hiring of the...
So Kent Companies is managing for them? Okay. Yeah, I can look into it. I'll call the owners.
I think it depends, I think Buck must be the general contractor. I don't know the relationship, but it's kind of hard to change. You know, you, you have a bid packet and you have bid day and at that point you have a contract with all the subs. So on these projects, if people have interests in this, you really, once bid day occurs and, you know, the bids are signed, you know, those, those contractors are going to do the work and they're going to hire and there's very little, you know, the contract set. So I think if we have concerns about it, we, you know, the, like the convention center is something that's coming up. I mean, it happens a lot with public projects and there's a number of different ways that entities do that, like, you know, I can't forget, the wage one, prevailing wage is a big, you know, there's definitely different flavors or different things that people bring to, you know, general bid construction contracts. So I, you know, really, it has to do with how that process works. I think for Unit 7, I would, I got to imagine it's kind of far, so.
And I know when talking to them, but I'll, I'll get to the Buck, I know when I talk to them, they, they had a, they were very, very, they had a very tight budget, if you catch my drift. I think it appraised far less than what it was costing to build. I don't think that they had much wiggle room to say have something be more expensive in order to be local or something like that. I think they were, they were probably looking very, very closely at, at contract costs, you know, like, kind of like Commissioner Rinsesvassiga said, you know, the low bid probably, assuming they could do the job, probably got it, whether they're coming from Grand Rapids or Muskegon Heights or Muskegon or Northern Shores would be my guess. But let me check it, check with the owners and shoot you an email back and I'll email the commission and.
And to give us, and give us an opportunity too to educate ourselves on what general contractors and project developers, you know, are, are facing. Once upon a time, we had more construction firms, but those have, you know, definitely gone the way, you know, a lot of smaller agencies with, sometimes not with the expertise that's needed with some of these buildings, but I think it'd be a great opportunity to educate ourselves.
And it's, it's mostly the subcontractors that actually hire all the people. The trades are the ones that hire it. It's your HVAC contractor, your, you know, your bricklayer, you know, those are the people where most people get hired. Buck Construction doesn't really hire many people. They just let a contract to someone who's, you know, and most of them are very regional. I mean, these construction projects, they move around. I mean, we, at MCC, we've done a lot with the hospital, but, you know, it's really tough because those, those people work for a year on one project and then they go to Lansing or they go to Traverse City. And that's just part of the construction industry is to travel every day, 80 or 90 miles to go to work, so.
And there, and there's fewer people working in the industry now that, you know, projects are being slowed down.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it's a definite issue, but the, the issue is you need strong local subcontractors. And if you have large subcontractors that are Muskegon-based, you'll prob, they will probably hire people and send them to all these places to do that work. But if you go and you're looking for a HVAC contractor and all there are, you know, Grand Rapids or Lansing firms, they're probably gonna bring in their project manager and, you know, they're gonna have their list of 50 or 100 people that they, that are known employees.
So this, this could give us an opportunity, you know, looking at these realities, getting educated and then even talking to, you know, the, the experts in those fields with workforce development and the like to see how we can, you know, bolster our, our...
Capabilities.
Capabilities, you know, locally. Because I know that with the hospital and whatnot, Michigan Works did the...
They're really trying, but...
They, they got the internship or the...
It's an apprenticeship program.
The apprenticeship program and, you know, highly...
Some of those people are working now for subs that...
You know, targeting the whole community, but a lot of specificity for hitting the minority community for, for training. Because again, the, the trades are short.
Yeah.
Every, every...
Absolutely.
So, but yeah, I think this gives us an opportunity to really investigate and look at, you know, what are the realities when we're talking about this? And how, how can we, you know, partner to, you know, address building that pool of skilled individuals, you know, here?
Yep. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on that point. And I appreciate Commissioner Renssman giving us perspective. I think you have the most experience of anyone on this dais with regard to contracting and letting bids.
He can't get that dust out of his hair yet. It's, it's...
And whatnot.
And now we're on to the next one.
But I would just, you know, I would like more context, more information, yes. And then how can we be mindful of building that local capacity? And what can we do to strengthen that? But also, you know, something for us to be mindful of going forward as we make investments or loans or, you know, where we, or guarantees, you know, where we have skin in the game, so to speak, that we're mindful of when we're making those investments that we expect the recipients to look to hire local as much as feasibly possible. Because it's, it's not our dollars, it's our taxpayers' dollars. And I think that's minimum what they would expect when, how we, you know, use their resources. We need to be good stewards of that. And I, I suspect there is enough consensus on that point on this commission and that's what our expectations as, as public servants.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Commissioner Moore?
Different topic. So are we done with...
I'm done. Thank you.
He's done.
I just didn't want to cut anybody else off if they wanted to speak on that. But when it comes to our annual meeting, as it's already mid-February and our fiscal year in the summer, and I just am wondering about when... Am I stealing all of your topics?
Uh-huh.
Happy to do that.
You're welcome.
So I'm just wondering what the, what to expect with an annual meeting.
Yep. Yeah, we don't, we don't have a date yet. We wanted to do some more, more of a focus on team building this time around. Not to say that we can't discuss goals and whatnot, but the goals that we set for like, last time we set some large ones for 2021 and then we've just kind of updated those each year. And that seems to be going pretty well. And my expectation was although we might have some tweaks in there, a lot of them would probably, you know, they, they're very relevant still and very ongoing. So we wanted to focus on some more team building stuff to kind of get maybe, to maybe even do a better job of, of understanding where each of us are coming from, you know, as a commission and also how more staff fits in on that. But we're finding a lot of the things that we wanted to try to do, they're, they're harder to do in the wintertime. Catch my drift? A lot of them are outside, a lot, you know, a lot of the, the structured stuff that exists now, they're, they're more like springtime, summertime things. And so we were hoping to kind of push them off until maybe, you know, maybe like April, but giving our commissioners plenty of notice so they can get time off work.
That would be great.
If they need to get time off of work.
That would be great.
But no, we, we look at it, we look at a number of, of options and the ones that we liked were very much out, they were very much outside. And it just, it didn't seem like a good idea to try to do it and, you know, at the end of February or, or beginning of March, especially with the way this winter's gone. It could be 45 or it could be negative 45. So, but, but we still are planning on doing something. We're just kind of pushing that together now. You'll get plenty of notice.
Follow-up though. One, has Luge slash Winter Sports Complex been considered? Snow shoeing?
Not for Byron.
No? No, snow shoe. They have the yurt.
You can snow shoe, but we got in trouble last time. We did, we put it in a bubble ball.
They have the yurt. They have the, the rental. Anyways, so it's no. It sounds like Winter Sports Complex is not happening. And then will we be getting vice mayor's nut?
You, you just want to see me go down the luge.
I do.
You do?
I do.
I would.
Did you do it with us last time?
No.
Oh, well, some of us are experiencing luge now. But...
Well, you can coach me.
Right. But follow-up, in the meantime, if that's going to be more of a spring, will we get a copy of that document that was updated last time saying what progress we've made in the last 12 months or so in the mean times? Since we can probably just view that over email then, so.
Yeah, we can put that together, kind of, kind of do like a year-end or fiscal year-end sort of a report for you for the last quarter. Yeah.
Well, from the last time that document was updated, which I think was last.
Which was March. Yeah, March or, March or April of last year. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, commissioners? Just a quick, oh, you do. Commissioner German?
Yeah, and maybe Chief can speak on this. Looking at one of the emails today, Chief, about a shooting that took place here in Muskegon. And, and I'd just like you to just kind of elaborate on where we at. And I didn't see a name that was released or anything, so. But I just come to find out, I did find out who that person was and it kind of hit home because the young man that was actually shot and died was a former student of mine's and also someone that I coached. And it just saddens me, you know, to, to hear this type of tragedy that's happening in our city. We talk about the good things that's going on and where we want to go, but we still have a problem with guns on the street and these young men and teenagers are, are getting killed. And, you know, my condolences go out to the parents, you know, the mother and father. So I just want the chief to just kind of explain, you know, where we at on the investigation and if, you know, you are okay with releasing the name of the young man and what's going on.
Certainly. I can release some cursory information to kind of catch the public up. We have done two media releases on this tragic event that occurred basically on the south, southeast part of our city. Last night, we responded to the 2,200 block of Valley Street, at which time we, we went there on a medical that an individual had been shot at that location or believed to be a gunshot wound. When we arrived, our public safety officers had immediate contact with Melvin, it's Totten, I believe.
Totten.
Totten.
Yeah.
T-O-T-T-E-N. He is of Muskegon. He's 29 years old. He was later pronounced deceased at the hospital. We now have our police department, our investigative bureau, looking into the facts of what had actually happened down there. We responded to a 911 call. There were some people at the scene. They did not actually witness the shooting, from what I understand. But we are gathering as much information as we can as to what Melvin had done previous to this as, you know, what he was doing that day to help us solve this absolute terrible crime that occurred in the 2,200 block of Valley Street.
Yeah. And I just want, you know, the parents to know, publicly to know that, you know, our police force are aware of what's going on and, as you stated, an ongoing investigation. And hopefully we can get, you know, to the bottom of this. And again, my condolences, I just want to say publicly goes out to the Totten family. And hopefully we can get some closure for this family.
Yeah, absolutely. And as always, we were, we were there immediately after this incident. Our officers and our detectives have talked to quite a few people. You know, we have collected quite a bit of, you know, evidence and information from the scene. We've talked to neighboring police departments that gave us additional information that I believe are going in the right direction. And obviously with all these events, we would like to solve those. We asked people to call our son Observer. We also asked them to call the police department if possible with information, which is 724-6750. We're always available for that information to help us out, to bring a closure to, you know, of course, the community and to the family in this tragic event. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? Not a public comment? Ah, buonasera, signore. Piacere.
Thank you. August Panici, 2137 Hudson Street. I actually had two items on my mind tonight, but my dear commissioner here, he took care of one of them. The reason I'm here is I'm representing my 87-year-old brother. You know, you plow the alleys. My brother lives at 857 West Hackley. And he's called City Yards. They plow the alley and they place the snow on his terrace and out of his terrace. The city truck, plow truck comes by and they fill his driveway. He's 87 years old. He can't do this anymore. He's called the City Yards. They, at one point told them that they would plow one way one time and one way the other time. There's only one person that uses that alley and he lives at the extreme south end of the street, which he could drive right out his own street. So he called me and I said, "Call the city manager." So he's called the city manager twice and the van hasn't been available. The lady said, "I will see what I can do." Obviously, nobody's doing nothing. And something needs to be done. I don't know who to call if I don't call the city manager. Who do we call to get something done? The guys at City Yards don't return calls.
Well, you'll get something done now.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it.
I waited all this time just to talk, listen to you guys. I could be at the basketball game.
Well, would you please?
Thank you.
Grazie, grazie, signore. Give Joe a kiss for me. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? I, I did want to say one thing. There was that marvelous series that appeared in rapid growth media through the fall and into the winter with a great wrap-up with a video that I sent you all. Well, that made its way around the state quite a bit, to the point where three weeks ago I was contacted by staff at Michigan State University and invited to go down and have lunch and take question and answer time with staff from their urban sciences, urban affairs department and folks from their extension services. And I got to refamiliarize myself with a few folks that are assigned to this area. And they're just really excited about the hard work being done here by us and our partners in the public, private and the nonprofit sectors and all the great energy that is being, you know, generated, you know, for the sake of our, our folks here. But while I was speaking, somehow the physical type of development came up and I mentioned DPZ out of Miami. And I kept going. And then my friend Arnold Weintraub, who's part of the school there, "Excuse me, Mayor, did you say DPZ?" I said, "Yeah." And then I continued on and he goes, "Excuse me, Mayor?" I said, "Yes. DPZ Miami?" I said, "Yeah." Then I kept on going on. He said, "DPZ is coming to Muskegon? They are engaged with Muskegon." I said, "They are engaged in Muskegon." We spent two weeks with them prior to Christmas, you know, going through the Shrep process for the redevelopment of our, the Sappy site, Moonward Point. And the room went just, because it don't get any better than DPZ. And should this take off, which we all hope it does, it, it will, you know, place Muskegon, you know, firmly internationally as a, a city with that type of cachet. And it was, it was remarkable to see the look on everybody's faces because you, you got a room full of, you know, urban scientists and architects and everything else. They're going, "No." "Yeah." So I just thought I'd share that because it was, it was a great experience and it was good to go down. And hopefully we'll, we'll see a bit more collaboration. They're really interested in getting their students into town, internships or study, you know, sites and whatnot. So they want to build a close relationship with the, with the city of Muskegon and perhaps engage and help us enhance what we're doing with their expertise.
It was that school that was here five years ago, six years ago, that they'd, they'd done a study and that actually kind of helped, informed our form-based code process as well, I believe, in term of urban, urban revitalization, planning, mixed-use development kind of thing. So, yeah, that's, it's happy to hear that the dialogue and the collaboration is still proceeding and they're stoked about what's happening here in Muskegon.
Yeah, it was very gratifying. I went down with my fellow mayor, Bobby Hopewell, from Kalamazoo. So they brought us in to talk about our initiatives and our, our challenges. And I know we have challenges, but sometimes it's very interesting to see how other people have more challenges and how blessed we are with the network of, of partners and engaged and loving citizens that, you know, we have here, you know, with their, with their fingers in the dirt. You know, it's, it's good stuff. It's good stuff. Anything else before we pause for the calls?
Yeah, the gentleman was here. His first part of his question was in regard to the progress of the lighting throughout the city. And Leanne has supplied me with some information and I shared it with him. But since then, she has some more information. I think this might be a good time if she can share with all of us so where we're at.
So I did meet with Consumers Energy toward the end of January. And since then, they have provided with, provided us with a map. It's kind of rudimentary. I did share that with all of you. Essentially, the Phase 1 area for the LED conversion is encompassed within downtown from Muskegon to Shoreline Drive and approximately from 9th to Spring Street. So I did get information today that they are approximately 85% complete. And at the meeting in January, they had expressed a lot of interest in talking about planning the next phases. So that's where we will be focusing our efforts then, is what makes sense for what, what portion of the city and what year.
I've, I've had a couple of individuals ask me about the brightness of the light and I don't understand that totally, but it lumens or how it's measured? How does the new light compare to the incandescent that we now have as far as brightness?
I am not an expert in that. I can certainly follow up with Consumers Power to try to understand that better. I, I do know that LED, they call it like the temperature, the color, is very different from sodium and incandescent that have, have been used in the past. So it's a much cooler color, more blue, more white than yellow. I, from what I understand, the, the bulbs that are being installed are comparable to the lumens. I don't know that we want anything to be dimmer or brighter, but I can certainly ask that question.
Thank you. Commissioner German?
Now, for the installation of these lights for the replacement, are you at the table and just kind of guiding them, you know, where they could actually be best used at?
Well, there was already a plan developed before I arrived. And so right now, they are just implementing that plan. But I will be at the table with the phases moving forward, for sure.
Yeah, and there was a reason why we picked the area that we did because there were, it was more business and a little less residential and we kind of wanted to let the Phase 1 happen and just experience it for a little bit of time and make sure that's exactly what we want and what we expect. And if it turns out that they're too dim or too bright or too blue or too white, we can make changes in the rest of the city going forward versus trying to implement it all in one year and then finding out that the, that the lights are too blue and people are complaining about them or they're not bright enough or they're too bright. So the thought was, let's do this area that impacts fewer residents. There are residents in this area.
Right.
But it's a big enough area where we can get a good idea over the next year as we prepare for the next, for Phase 2 and feel the complaints and the comments and encourage people to look at them and experience them, knowing that they will be eventually installed at or near their homes.
Yeah. And that's been a question for me from constituent citizens. Due to, you know, high crime rates in some areas, the more lighting, the less crime. So, you know, looking at the, I guess, the highest priority for our crime rate down to, you know, the lowest, you know, moving those type of increments, I think would be feasible for this project.
Yeah. Remember always, if people ask about, you know, lights and crime and whatnot, one of the most effective things is remind people, turn their front lights on.
Yep.
That has more proven track record than street lamps. And that's why we really push that even during National Night Out. A lot of neighborhood associations give out free light bulbs. Turn those porch lamps on.
Yep.
Because that is what's really going to be deterring. People got to know that somebody's living there. And you give a damn. And we all do. Was there another question on this, Commissioner Moore?
I was just wondering with the phases, if there's an idea of how many phases or how many years, or maybe just remind me of what that is. Maybe we talked about that when the assessment was first going through, but...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we purposely set it up at like a, I think it was a five-year phase in, but a 10, the folks paid over 10 years, but we, we phased it in over five.
Okay.
And, and maybe there's a chance to accelerate it depending on our ability to pay.
Sure.
Sort of a thing. But we thought, when we looked at it, we thought that that fit our, that fit our fiscal situation at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Financial-related question, so maybe Beth will need to chime in here. But I was just wondering if our current fiscal year budget is reflective of cost savings from the LED upgrades or if we're going to see that reflected at the end of the year in terms of what the actual versus estimate is? And then it'll be reflected in the forecast for 2018, 2019 budget?
You know, the, the street lighting is down just a little bit. So I don't think we're seeing a big impact yet. So we are just probably two years, like a month behind as far as our bill. So, you know, maybe by the end of fiscal year, we'll be able to see, you know, a certain percentage. But it's just down slowly.
Yeah.
From, from what I understand, from talking with consumers, is that our bill will be adjusted based on the date that each poll was changed.
Okay.
So I don't know that we'll see the, the savings until later, when the phase is complete.
Yeah, because you got to remember, these are not metered lights. We pay a flat rate based on the type of bulb and the lumens and stuff like that. And also originally, we had an expectation of X percent savings based on whether they're mercury vapor, high-pressure sodium, whichever ones were more expensive. mercury vapor or high pressure sodium, whichever ones were more expensive. When then they came in last year, remember, and they went through and they upgraded a bunch of the mercury vapors, the high pressure sodiums. So they, so we got some of the savings and then, and then we had already been going down this road here. So some of the savings came in when they, when they made that upgrade and then the rest of the savings will come in when we move up to, you know, rest from the LEDs. I think it was mercury vapor to high pressure sodium. I won't pretend to know everything about lights, but I do remember that, that there was a step in there that we didn't have to take and we didn't realize that they were taking.
Yeah.
But they did. Didn't cost us any money.
So we may just see a little bit of a bump, extra cost savings than planned at the end of this fiscal year, but then we'll forecast a little bit, that or a little bit more for next fiscal year. So we'll start seeing some of the, the benefits and cost savings, relieve some of the pressure on our, our budget a little bit.
Okay. Commissioner Quist?
Commissioner Warren mentioned about phases. How many phases are there? Five?
There were five phases initially.
So are they equal in size? We're about only 20% through this program?
They were designed to be equal in cost, so some of them are bigger, some are bigger lights, that have bigger lumens, that have a bigger impact, that cost more money. So it might not be the number of light bulbs or, or the area, but it was based on cost. So we, I think we're trying to budget like $172,000 a year to, to do the replacement as what we started with at least. And so the goal was to do as many lights as that allowed us to do. With the initial estimate, when they went through and did the engineering, was that that would cover essentially 20% of them. And so we would get 20% of them done each year.
So it's a five-year program before the city will be complete?
Yes, yeah. Because it was a, I want to say it was a million two or something like that was the upfront cost and we kind of struggled with that. Do we borrow money and try to do it? And that maybe eats into some of the savings or we just phase it in? I remember the conversation, I think we decided, let's phase it in, but give the folks a little more time to pay it. So it was a, so it was a 10-year assessment, but a five-year phase in. So it was kind of like a compromise between the two. So we're not really collecting $172,000 a year right now, although we could reevaluate that because as properties change hands, they actually pay their full 10-year assessment when there's a change in ownership. So depending on how many houses or how many residents or how many properties have a transaction, there's a chance that we could end up collecting more of that sooner and then maybe augment those, augment the, you know, the phase in, the phase in period a little bit based on what we're collecting. And I guess we'll know more of that nearer the end of the year. But we know that because the Midtown Squarehouses, we sold each of those, we, you know, we had to pay the full assessment on those and everything that, everything that sells into city will pay the full assessment, not just the one year.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director Mikesel. Anything else? And Vice Mayor, so we can get you home and take your Goffison and your anesthetizing antibiotic.
Well, thank you, Mayor. There's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
This has been moved by our hailing, but always handsome Vice Mayor.
Well, thank you again.
And supported by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
No. I was intending to.
Yeah. I was intending to.